We got one that's non-co-stars, did contact three co-stars on the actually. But the lowest ones are non-co-stars. So can we handle that? Since we contacted co-stars, the non-co-star is kicking at it.
If, how much is it for?
Is this yesterday or today?
Are you in the bids or you just hit the telephone?
Kim said.
Yeah. I don't think it matters if it could start by co-stars for quotes.
You could actually see just right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nelson Reepnack.
Here.
Jim Still.
Jim's here.
Here.
Larry Sayer.
Here.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Venus Shade.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Anybody have anything they want bring before council before we start making guesses there?
Oh, no, I was just saying a lot of gems.
Sorry. Alright, consent agenda. Need an approval to accept a consent agenda. Second. Those made properly second. Questions? All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Uh, opposed? Borough manager report.
The list is long, but some of it, most of it's just explanations. The fire department requirements on ARPA have been submitted. A total of $527,000. That is mostly maintenance costs, what's two big things, maintenance costs for the buildings and for equipment, safety equipment for the fire department. County said that they got about $27 million of requests for their ARPA money, their $9 million, so they're still reviewing it all. One of the pieces for us, and we'll get to it here when we get the ARPA done update is we have to provide a match, and I'll discuss that. That's why I have the charge in front of me when I get to it. Parking meters quote, the first quote for 100 meter heads is $61,000. So, we're not moving forward that yet, we're still trying to get some more quotes. But that $61,000 will be divided between the borough and the parking authority. The infiltration hipflow study with Eads, that's also part of the ARPA program, that was $1,327,000 we requested from county. The pool DCNR draft, RFP, was submitted, it's now with Eads, however, we have a meeting with DCNR on the 19th of July to discuss some of the things that they would like to see changed in the RFP and some more guidance they want to provide us. So, I have a meeting with them on 19 July to discuss that with them. That's why you'll see on your ARPA update, I took off the pole heater for $54,000 because we're going to try to incorporate that into the DCNR study grant. The bidding and property demolition update, the estimated completion date with everything on that is sometime by the end of September. That includes the lot, the grass, all your thing that's entailed in that project. I showed you a video a little while ago of it coming down, that was from yesterday. They've actually broken through on the third street side now, so you can see all the way through. Catherine Walnut Park update, that equipment has been ordered, it has been approved with county commissioners through the CDGB money for that park, which is about $30,000 on that piece. So, that equipment has been ordered, and the estimated delivery date is sometime the end of the summer, maybe September. ARPA budget update, and you can see it in front of you, I put in red $40,000, $60,000, $178,000. Okay, those were the three things that the finance committee wanted to bring to council. What's in blue is what went forward to county. Now, the only item on here that is dual is sewer storm line camera system. You see it's $192,000. We have a quote now for $178,000. So, on that one, you have three choices. You could still go with a county request, you could take it out of your ARPA, or if you look at your treasurer's report, we have $800,000 and wastewater collections capital reserve, you could take the money out of there. So, those are the three choices that the council could move forward with. The camera, we just got back from repairs again, it's been down for over a month. Remember, we talked about the financial meeting, it's still down. I talked to Dawn about it today, they sent it back, it's still broke, but we're not taking it back, they're going to come and get it again. So, the bottom line is our camera is still in op, so the council needs to decide, do you want to spend $40,000 on the compressor, $60,000 for Walnut Park, and the camera? So, let's talk about it one by one. The initial estimate for the fire department air compressor system, that's that bottle filling system, was $40,000. I received three quotes. One was from a company, and we'll get to this in this next page, so you don't have to vote now. One is from a company for $44,100, and that is co-stars. One is for another co-stars of $56,000, and one is non-co-stars for $39,000. So, we'll talk about it when we get to it. So, you're going to have to make a decision where, when we get to it, do you want to spend $40,000 or a little more than $40,000 for that? The next thing is Catherine Walnut Park, that's the $60,000 that the finance committee is going to recommend to council, they set that aside and earmark that for the Catherine Walnut Park project. Then, to complete it, you talked about the sewer line camera system is $178,000. We need to decide, the council needs to decide how you want to fund that, county, our ARPA, or the waste collections capital reserve.
I'd like to run it past the county to see if they would fund it. I think it makes the most sense for them to do it.
Yeah, we already submitted it to them, you're right, they already have it.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I don't know if we need to expedite it sooner than that, I think that's kind of what we talked about, is we either buy it first and then see if they'll reimburse us.
They won't reimburse us. They got $30 million to play with their request up there, they won't go back and reimburse us for it. But, it's a good point, if we leave it in the county and let them try to do it, they said it could take three to four months after they make a decision on anything. So, it's just going to sit there. That's the catch 22 we're stuck in right now.
Although, it does get used throughout the county.
Yes.
Yes.
So...
That's why it would make sense for them to pay for it, but you're going to wait four months, that's kind of... They said they will not reimburse us if we buy it.
No. Maybe I misspoke, I guarantee they won't reimburse us for it if you buy it.
But it's already bought.
Yeah, it's already bought. And the thing is, they came back to me and said, when I submitted all the requests, and I have them up here, but when I submitted all the requests for ARPA, one of the requirements on the form is, how much is the borough going to pay as a match? I left them all as unknown, because we hadn't really discussed it yet. But, they said at least, and I didn't say it, I came back and said, we'll do a 10% match on everything, because that's standard at 10%. So, that adds up to $214,000, 214,600. And if you look at the bottom, where it says balance remaining for ARPA, $229,000, that wipes out, that wipes out the ARPA that we have in our account. However...
But we're getting a lot from that.
You're going to get $2 million for $200,000, that's what you're going to get. But, that's only if they approve it, that's just what we're offering, is a 10% match. If they don't come back and approve our $2 million out of the $9 million, then we don't know what it's going to be. So, right now, quite honestly, Bobby, it's a guessing game, county and this stuff.
Shade.
Yeah, it is.
Can I question?
Yeah.
Can they approve or disapprove by line? And they don't have to approve, it's not an all or nothing type deal.
Correct, correct.
So, they can approve this and disapprove this.
I prioritize them, that's correct, I prioritize them one through five.
That's my thought.
And that's based on the meeting we had, so I prioritize them one through five on that.
So, what was four and five? I see over here you have one, two, three.
Yeah, I'm going to pull it up for you, so you can see it.
Can I probably put blight on there?
The finance committee recommends not putting blight on ARPA.
Why?
Yeah, why?
Why wouldn't we not put blight on the ARPA monies? Hello?
There was already money, $30,000 in the budget for ARPA, or not, through ARPA, but that Rex has access to.
Correct.
So, that's why we decided to leave that, leave it at, add that $30,000.
But do you realize how much it's going to cost us to help combat the blight issue in the borough?
Depends on what we do, yeah. I mean, we could spend, we could spend that $60,000 and look for another 60.
Correct.
So, we have to be very careful about that.
Correct. But why wouldn't we ask for the 60?
Well, I think we asked for it from county, didn't we?
No, we did, we took it off, we presented it.
No, it's an issue, is the borough, is the borough council going to set aside money for blight on here? It says blight $30,000, but I don't have it marked for anything, because the recommendation to the rest of the council was, we were not going to earmark any money in here for blight, but I left it on here for discussion's sake, and that's all.
I think it's a priority for the borough to work on our blight issue.
Do you guys have any idea what we're going, how many voters we're, what we have to do to go on?
Well, there's a list of buildings that we've been looking at for the blight committee, but we've also been looking at creating different standards to come at it from a different perspective for the homeowners, and creating different things for rentals as well. So, there was no talk about, let's tear this one down, let's tear that one down, but...
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah. Kind of need to reorganize and have a battle plan for how you're going to, you know, do this.
I thought you needed to bring for, for us, for, for them.
No, as soon as, as soon as...
The money's not even requested now, so...
We need to target that, right?
Yeah, we need to know...
You know, but we need to know how much you need, and we'll decide what we're going with.
We have a meeting next Thursday, but it's too late to put that into the ARPA fund now.
Oh, no, you, council could do it.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
You guys can do whatever you want.
We can work on that at the blight meeting on Thursday?
Yeah, it's not going to county, this is a...
Do you have to tear it down?
What's that?
Did you write it that way, to tear it down?
Oh, there are some, but like I say, we're going into it with a different...
Mindset.
Yeah, mindset, than we did the first time with the inspection, and also we're going to include, I don't know, all your...
I think there's two separate plots we're talking about, and I'll make sure everybody understands it. The one pot is the $30,000 that Rex has down in the borough budget, and that's going to be used right now for 22 Ridge Road. And then, the other pot is internal to the borough, to the council, if you guys want to earmark and keep $30,000, whatever you guys decide, it could be a thousand, I don't know, whatever you guys decide, it's just earmarked for blight that you guys can use later on. That's the two plots.
Anytime we have tried to do any of this, you know, the first thing is, what's the verb, what to do?
Well, I think...
And that's, you know, we have to have some kind of an answer there.
But I respect what, I respect what they're saying, and I think you need to come with them.
Yeah, I do too, they need to know, yeah.
So, we have, we're telling you, we have borough has to put money in county?
Well, the county split, that's what we have with them, is like a 50% deal, so we absolutely have to put some of the...
County has that $100,000 set aside in a budget up there just for demolition of buildings, so if the borough comes up and wants to demolish a building, a piece of that that's been set aside will come to the borough like a 50-50% match.
And rest assured, as soon as we have a set program that we want to present to council, we will, and ask for your blessing, because, you know, we're working hard on this, and I think we've come up with a, got a good group around this table, and I think we've come up with some really good ideas, so just be patient with us, and we'll be bringing back up.
We've really had to be.
Right, yeah, but I think everybody wants to say the same thing, right?
I agree, that's why I was just curious, because it wasn't there, so, okay.
Now, one thing that has come up, that I talked to county about, our CDBG funding for 2022 for the borough of Lewis Town is $123,666. Could we use that for blight? Yes. However, if you use that, it's going to sit for five to 10 years, but we can sell it and get back on the tax bills, so we're trying not to use that. However, the good piece is, we can use that $124,000 as a match, so we can keep that just set aside and say, when we do our match, whatever they do approve, we can use that money for a match. Now, here's the piece, that's $214,000 we'd have to provide for a match, but that's only if they approve all five priorities. If they only approve two priorities, we might only earn $40,000 for a match. So, we just don't know, there's, there's just so many unknowns in here. The best thing we can do on our end is this, prioritize it, discuss it, and just be on the same page with it when the time comes.
So, what were four and five up there, Kim? I'm sorry, I got...
That's fine, no, 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 you're fine, that's why I got it on here. Number four is firefighter safety equipment. And number five is the cost for the police station, $100,000 for Eads. You know, if you guys decide to take priority number three, which is the camera, and let's just say you decide to pay the $178,000 for that, then the priorities move up, and I would just give the county and say, hey, we took it ourselves, we want to move these other ones up. So, I think what we need to do to move forward here is, does the council want to discuss spending money for the air bottle system for the fire department? Because it is so outdated, they actually do need that. And that's what the finance committee had discussed and recommended to bring into council, if you want to...
Can we buy from a non-co-stars?
Yes, but you'd have to bid.
But these aren't bids, these are just estimates we've got, correct?
Well, we got official quotes.
These are quotes, but you're above, you're above, you're in the bid range.
But we still have to do the bids if we want to get ARPA.
No, if to buy from a non-co-stars, the co-stars are pretty good, see, you know.
Right, right.
And the co-stars, so the co-stars prices are...
$44,000.
$44,000 and $56,000.
Is it $44,000 and $56,000, same equipment as $39,000?
One of them is, one isn't, it's kind of confusing, but I do have it on here. So, the $44,000, I believe that is a Bauer, I'll pull that up, that's a delivery time of 13 weeks. The $56,000 is 10 to 12 months, and the breathing air system for the, that the police, the fire department brought to me is the same, about 13 weeks, so let me pull that up and we'll see it.
But all of those prices include the same equipment as what you brought in here?
Either the same or similar, different brand name, Ford, Chevy.
Okay, but it all does the same thing?
It all does the same thing.
May I say something there?
Yeah.
Okay, the air compressor we have up there now is a Bauer system. We've had that since 1980, and it's served us rather well, well, our system is a good system.
You mean, which one of these includes a Bauer system?
Yeah, I'll pull them up, yeah, I'll pull them up right now.
$39,000 Bauer, I'm sure.
So, the Keystone apparatus system, that is $44,000, I believe that's a Bauer system. There it is, the Bauer system, okay. Now, this one I contacted them, they gave me a quote for $44,119, and I went back and said, is this a co-stars quote? They said, no, I'll get you what. They sent it back, it was $19 cheaper.
Oh, okay.
This one here...
$19,000?
This is the one that the fire department brought to me, this is the Bauer system, this is $39,000, but they're out of Ohio, that's why they don't do any co-stars, if you mess with it. So, I, what I did was...
And what was the timeframe on that one?
Ten to twelve weeks.
Ten to twelve weeks, and then the last one here. This one here, they said is even better than a Bauer system. I talked to the guy, and it's a little more, it's 50, total everything on this thing was 56, 56, 190, 10 to 12 months.
Wow.
But they're local, they're in Harrisburg, so the hard part in this is you're not getting something simple to analyze, you know, you've got one good deal, non-co-stars, one that is timeline and center.
Bob, do you have any input on any of that, other than the Bauer, the Eagle system up there?
Well, like I said, the Bauer system was installed up there in 1980, we never had any issues with it. We do have maintenance program, by the way, twice a year services and everything, but once again, like I said, it was bought in 1980, so lifespan of it could end every day.
And these, these quotes, Kim, don't include any like maintenance?
Some of them do some dope, that's the thing. It was really hard to take these and start analyzing them, because you could get into so many eaches of these and does on this. This one here, onsite setup and training, but I don't see a warranty on here. They come with a warranty, I don't know how long it is. The other one, let's just, this one is a nice system, a little kind of, it's $56,000, you had to pay extra for the warranty, but it did have a hose system that was automatic hose system, so you didn't have to have all 10 firefighters pull that hose out and wrap it up, it was just automatic, you know. I think if you're going with one, just being, you know, me and Bob, it's basically talking, is go with this one, even though it's a little more, it's still a Bauer system, and it's on co-stars, and the delivery time is 13 weeks. Like I said, the other one was out of Ohio.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of them, one of them talked about freight will be additional, yeah, that one.
There you go. Estimated freight right there is what it should be, I don't know why it says additional.
I think they're letting you know because gas prices were to go up or something of that sort at this point in time in our world, but luckily, they're going down.
Do you have the money in ARPA? Yes, you do. You could theoretically tell the fire department, we'll pay $40,000, you pay $4,000. You know, there's different options you guys can do, because the finance committee did say they'd pay $40,000, so you could say, we'll pay $40,000, and the fire department has to pony up, you know, getting a hundred piece for the fire department.
They don't have money anyway.
They got $7,500 bucks in that pile of jacks right there. So, that means city is now $7,500 for one, so... So, do you guys want to vote on this, or just move to the next one, it's up to you guys?
What's the, we, would my, know the service of either one, like that one, or the $39,000?
Does the $39,000 one have anything like the service plan?
Yeah, well, they have, but that's...
It's just non-co-stars, but I don't think, does that make a difference, Mark, then, if we pick a non-co-stars?
We have to bid.
Yeah, it's based on the dollar, so...
We can go back and do a whole thing on it.
I'm just working on the service.
I mean, you can bid it, and maybe you'll get a better deal, I don't know, it's just co-stars saves you the time and the cost of bid.
Yeah, so, so this is the deal, so what I did was, I tried to do as much research as I could, so I called this company today, this is the one the fire department recommended, and it came in at non-co-stars in Ohio, at $39,947. Why? Because someone from the fire department told them, I only have $40,000 to spend, and so, because that's how he came out with his $40,000, so they came out with that.
I didn't have worked on that.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what he did, so they only have $40,000 to bid, they came out under $40,000, so...
I was surprised you weren't...
Now, now let's ask, right?
But then, that's why when I got this, and I found out it wasn't co-stars, that's why I got the list out, and there's a whole list.
At the bottom, at the note there, I'm not technical, ARPA quotes not include the offloading, uncrating placement compressors, is that, do you see that, Bob? Customers were sponsored to wire it and do all the venti work. Does the co-star, do they furnish all that? They'll do all that for us?
It depends on the vendor, but I can't answer that, actually, line and see if I answered, Bobby, I don't know.
The $56,000...
Yeah, the $50, I mean, you could wait until next council, I could do more research on this.
Right.
Service, and they have a training period for it too.
What I did is, I got into the co-star system, I had some in the co-star system, and this is all the vendors for fire department equipment. And a lot of them don't carry this kind of gear, so the ones that we highlighted, the ones I emailed to cover our bucks, that we had reached out for a quote, and two of them were able to come back with something similar, and that's what's on here. The other ones said they don't have anything to do with it, and some of them didn't respond, so...
You want to check into this a little bit further, Bob?
And the compressor?
And...
You're talking compressor?
Yes.
Yes, I'll add a little bit more research.
And do it at next meeting? That cheeky?
How hard can the co-star bid on it?
Like, the co-stars, they've already been through some type of bid process, so the state says, this is a good price, you can buy it without having to bid it yourself.
Where are we going to get bids for this thing?
Well, you're, you could, but, I mean, what you could do is put it out for bid and put your own specs in there, you know, delivered or whatever, and then that way, you'll be doing apples to apples. It's just, you know, I don't, I don't know if staff can even make up a bid for that, or if you'd have to hire somebody to do it.
No, it would take a while, but I guess my...
I'm not worried about the bid as much as I am making sure the service is there, and no one saw it, and we don't, it's hands-on for us.
Whatever's, whatever's going to happen is going to fall on my desk with everything else I got going on, so I'm going to need your help, Bob, okay? You've got 100 members down there, somebody's got to have some knowledge on this stuff that can write up a quote for me or bid process exactly what you're looking for. Because what I did is, I took this one here, I think it was this one here, no, was there another one? I took this one here, he sent me an email that basically listed all the stuff that was in this system, I typed it up through a separate email, and that's when I took that thing I just showed you, and attached it to an email saying, this is what I'm looking for, and that's where those ones came back.
So, you basically have your bid specs, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we know who sold the last one?
I don't think that company's in existence anymore. I'll do a little bit of research here for you, and I'll find out the other details, pass on to council, the arps, warranties and, uh, get it up to the service.
The service would be important.
But for anybody that doesn't, might not know what we're talking about here, it's the air compressor that takes care of filling out its model sometimes, and it's something we definitely need. It has a purifier in it, that's what gets put into breathing tanks, the guys who are in the box of fires, that's changed after every fire call, refilled. Also, the compressor has a safety, cylinders built into it, or the cylinders that we fill are actually sat in there because they do blow once in a while, you know, what can happen? And they're, they're in a safety cage where the guy operating the compressor is going there. But it is something that's very bad. If for some reason it went bad tomorrow, we'd have to compatible, take it down to East area, or maybe Agartown or someplace, that does work, but...
We'll put that off then when next meeting.
Yeah, I'll do more research on it.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Can we donate $40 to the, our department may buy it, take it up, give it up to $40?
You could, but based on the odds and things, I wouldn't donate $40,000 to...
Question?
That's something I think that we need to work a quarter on our end and make the payments and stuff, because one reason, then you put the onus on them to handle the $40,000 and get all the quotes and stuff, I think that should be high over our level. We're going to help them as much as we can, I wouldn't give my check for $40,000, say do this.
Do you have any idea where these other departments are?
As far as...
I dare you, with your question.
Do they ever have a Bauer?
They have.
I don't think they have a Bauer up there, I am not 100% positive.
Yep, I put down more research, got it, Bob, Bob will work with you on this, okay? Catherine Walnut Park, so we were talking about setting aside $60,000 for the park. Now, one other option that came up, and this is, I think, a good guess, that 2022 CDGB 123666, you could actually take that CDGB money, put it towards the park, send that $60,000 ARPA, and save the $60,000 ARPA, and keep it in your ARPA fund, and use that CDGB money, it's not in those letters, because it has to go to the LMI area, and because the park is in an LMI area, then we could use the money for that, so it's something to think about, okay?
And we're not planning on selling that, man?
No, no, it's going to be a park.
So, those monies would be...
So, I don't think you need to make a decision on that right now, I don't think you do. And then, the only other thing on here is the camera system. I know that Dawn is sweating bullets right now, he, every day, talks to me about this thing, because of the fact he doesn't have a camera, he's trying to get work done for a lot of these projects, through the Valley Street, and he doesn't have a camera.
Did you say it was fixed, or is...
Well, they fixed it four times last month, but every time it comes back broke. And the company knows it. It's not ours. We didn't even get to use it. It's broke when we get it back, so that's the problem.
So we're not paying them for it?
No, 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 no. Well, we're paying them. We budget fifteen to twenty thousand a year, and I think right now we're like twenty or twenty-five right now fixing this thing. That's why we need a new camera. That's out of warranty. It's two thousand, what's it saying, or two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
So like I said, you have three choices. You can take it out of this one here, Wayfair County, or just take it out of Capital Reserve, which you have eight hundred and eight thousand dollars in there.
Personally, I think we ought to buy it.
I'm with you on buying it. Still, I'd ask the county if they tell us that it's okay, but before I ask them.
When are they planning on making a decision, Barbara? You said.
Months.
Months.
Three, four months.
We can't go that long without one.
I tell you what, this is a rock and hard place on this one. I totally see where you're coming from. There's a chance we'd get the county to do it. I got it, but can we wait that long? I don't know. Our sewer lines are old in this town, you know that. We have all these projects going on, and right now we're getting ready to slip line part of Fourth Street, I think. You guys approved sixty thousand for that, so we're gonna need the camera for that, too. I'll be honest, I don't think there's a wrong decision that can be made. We just have to make a decision on it, right or wrong. Not right or wrong, but buy it now or wait.
Slip line, you were talking about on the fourth, is the one down by.
The.
Juliana and Fort Park.
Yep, yep. So if you want my opinion as the borough manager, I would buy it now, take it out of Capital Reserve.
Because we still have the hundred seventy-eight thousand.
Correct, and I was taking out of Capital Reserve because you got almost a million dollars in there. Now it's just sitting there.
I totally agree with you. I still don't have it. I still don't see why we can't still ask the county for it.
Oh, no, yeah.
If we buy it now, they're still asking for it.
You can postpone it till August.
I don't want to.
See what happens.
I'm not being.
I hear what you're saying.
I want to buy it now, and I want to have the county, I want to ask the county.
For reimbursement?
Yeah.
We can do that. I have no problem doing that.
Yeah.
I can write up a letter on that.
The county needs full exposure and full usage of it.
They do.
They should.
They do.
Or maybe we could charge them to use it.
We can do that, too.
Look, if they don't help us with it, I say we charge them to use it.
I thought about that, about some right now policies for the cost and fee schedule, because we're gonna be talking about that.
All the towns and municipalities get to, you know, partake in what we get, they should have fun.
I think what Don said, they don't work that.
No.
We don't.
It's, yeah, because they come and do things for us, too.
Yeah.
So we got that, yeah, it's teamwork. So I, me, I recommend taking out a capital reserve, leaving the money in your ARPA, and then keeping it in there and having it go to county to see if we can bring it back.
I'm making a motion for that.
May property second question. Well, in favor, gives her consent to say an aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll do a memo up and for your signature, Mr. President.
I just want, this is.
Yeah, that's the one, what we talked about today.
Because it's not actually called the Capital Reserve. It's the wastewater collection account.
Right.
Yeah, that's what's, yeah.
I just want to make sure that clarification, because they do have a reserve.
But yes, the one, eight hundred and four thousand. We're working on that end. Let's see, keep going here. Unless you guys have more questions on ARPA right now.
What?
Yeah.
What, where are we taking out? There's a.
Wastewater collections?
Yes. Okay. It's the wastewater collection.
Wastewater collections, it's eight hundred and four thousand. I think it's on the left side, Jim.
Oh, got it.
It's eight hundred and four thousand.
Oh, yeah. All right.
And that allow us to keep that money inside of ARPA unless we need reimbursement. All right. Police ticket machine purchases. We received those phones that are acquired through those ticketing machines. Those have been mailed. I contacted the vendor today to get a status on receiving and when we would expect to get those back and ready to go. And they said they would be back to me today or tomorrow. They asked me a contract, still not signed. It is signed by us. It is signed by myself and Heavy. So I had a meeting with our union guys to sign it, Todd, Foley, and them, explain the situation. They said, we're gonna call Adam. Adam came in, and we sat down and talked. And he agrees that the document we signed is the one we had for negotiations, and we flipped through it page by page and page, but for some reason he still won't sign it. He says he wanted to give me a clean copy of what they came up with for, based off the two thousand eighteen contract, which has no play in this, and they both agreed, even Todd, Foley, our vice president, and Adam. But it's still not signed. So I don't know what to tell you, except we're going by that contract. They know we're going by that contract. We've signed it on our end. I'm waiting to hear back from Adam to see if he's gonna come back and sign it, but I haven't heard from him. Rec Park paving estimates. We do have two estimates. Right now, in a very quite a bit, one is two hundred and fifteen thousand, and one's a hundred and seventy-five or something like that. The bottom line is we're waiting for more quotes. Ben's waiting for a couple more, so we are looking at those quotes. I mean, theoretically, if you take that one seventy-five, and you could use that part while you're paid for the courts and Rec Park, too. So that's probably why it's a good idea to take it out of Capital Reserve or Capital Waste Collections, whatever. Fire convention, two thousand twenty-three. The issue on this one is, and we talked about this at the fire convention, the other meeting the other night, and I don't think there's gonna be an issue, but the bottom line is, I think I have a fancy pointer here. Because they request, they request this area here for the parking, like RVs and stuff like that. However, we recommend that they use this area over here. Now, the only challenge we have over here is a couple of fences. We just pull the post out, roll the fence back, you know, and then put it back. So they are initially, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, they're initially okay with this now, using this area here and not over here, because you can't even access this area here. Just want to give you a heads up on that.
Well, that, that won't interfere with any of the, there's been football games or anything like that at that time here, right?
Larry says we have a clear schedule.
That's what I thought he said. Okay.
All right, fire convention, parket ticket processing. Okay, this is something that I think we need to discuss. We don't have a treasurer anymore since she resigned this week. Stacy is swamped downstairs, and we're back to where we were a few months ago with her handling all the stuff, including some of the treasurer duties, basically. But we received the tickets from parking down there at her office. She has to process them. I would like to move that to the police department and have them receive ticket payments from people that get parking tickets. They go to the police station. I would like to move Stacy up here in this office so she could do all the accounts payable stuff and help with the treasurer stuff till we can get a treasurer, and then leave Sandra downstairs so she could do the refuse and the tickets, because that's what she does, the garbage tickets, okay? Because that extra ticket duty that she's picked up down there takes forever. So one of the issues that came up was why would we leave the police station? Well, it's an issue that they can pay online. They can pay inside a box, you know, the check, whatever. They don't always have to come in and pay with cash. But if you just set it up at the police station, maybe a couple, like on Wednesdays you can pay tickets from two to three, you know, or something like that. If they really want to pay in person, they can do that. But I'm recommending to council that we transfer that operation down to the police station with the police station staff to do that.
It's currently an option anyway, correct?
What's that?
That you could pay your ticket as.
No, we don't collect any money. Other than for reporters.
And that's, that's not, that's not a law.
It's not a law, but I don't know. I mean, if you restrict it to one or two days, maybe, but, I mean, the only one we have down there that could do it is Becca, and she has plenty of work to do now, so it's just gonna create a headache for her.
That's for Stacy and us.
Yeah. My question is, how many people actually pay their tickets in person? Probably, maybe, or just put them in the envelope and.
Oh, my lord, yes.
Just have to get the discount or?
There's no discount.
Yeah.
Most of the time, I might say something, most of the time is that they want a receipt. To be honest, that's why.
They get a receipt if they pay online?
Yes. But there is a fee.
Two dollars and fifty cents. And now I thought you had a clean line of it.
Is that something the interns could do down at the police station as far as taking the money for the tickets?
I don't know. How often they'd be out ticketing, so they're not gonna be in the office to take the money. I said, if you limit the time, because she's not gonna be able to run back and forth to the window of the box throughout the day.
We, can't we do a policy? Says you only pay on the box. So you have to pay in the box, that's the thing. We still collect it. She has to sit down to the processing, I mean. That's the same thing. So I'm just saying right now, we got Stacy down there, again, back to where we were, and it was an issue that even when Eric was here, she was having problems with Stacy doing the work down there, because she would go down and talk to Stacy and come back and tell us about how many checks she found down there that were supposed to have mailed, we spilled, and weren't mailed yet. Why I keep getting these emails, these invoices are past due, because they can't keep.
We went through that before.
We did.
And Stacy was told if she wanted to work overtime, work overtime, get it caught up.
She does, but.
Why, why isn't she doing that?
She doesn't want to work overtime. If you gave it a choice, she doesn't want to work overtime.
Well, she did when we mentioned it to her.
Okay.
He's right. At the time, and I said, you've got full authority to work overtime.
I mean, we told her, she said, well, I.
Well, maybe she thought it was just that brief period of time. Maybe she didn't realize.
She said she was afraid to ask. I mean, I suppose.
Now, what she said was the old borough manager wouldn't let me. Like, that was five months ago.
Yeah.
So, and I told her she has, I've told her I'd give her a laptop if she needs to use it, take it home, do this stuff.
How about, how about talking to her again tomorrow? You know, and she, I mean, Tower, you know, she needs overtime.
She's really involved with her husband's business, too.
Or maybe, or maybe the other girl was once the most.
That's what I was gonna ask. What about Sandra?
Yeah, I mean.
She does help.
Either, either one of them, either one of them, if they're interested in overtime, I mean, if that's what it takes to get it done, that's what we're gonna do.
This will be at the point now where I have to direct overtime, because they already know they can do overtime. I've talked to them about a hundred times. Brian's talked to them about, because they do get overtime. Didn't one of them have six hours last week, or last pay period, hit six hours?
Six hours.
They know they can do overtime already. That's the challenge, they know that. All I'm bringing it up is the fact that down there in that office, there's a lot of things that happen in that office, and we only have the two down there, so we can, we can put it out that you can only pay online. There's no reason you can't just pay online for a ticket. You still got to proceed, you know? We can close it off, receive it, but that's only part of the problem, because they, when they put it in the box, they still, and even when it comes in online, she still has to process it.
Well, we don't have a computer.
The next one they come in, yeah, put it in the box, in the box, or pay in cash. We can postpone it for further discussion on the finance committee, I guess.
What?
I gotta ask a question. Did you make any money on these parks? Meters? I mean, on this.
The tickets or the meters?
The meters.
Meters?
Because we got a meter made, we got another guy fixing it, and we have Stacy, and then we have, we have four or five people handling the money.
I haven't looked at the numbers in quite a while.
Now, we're gonna, we're gonna stay like one hundred thousand dollars.
I can tell you the question from what I remember is, we've never really made any money on them. It kind of just pays for itself.
Yeah.
But every time we talk to business owners downtown about eliminating and everything, they are very useful in making sure the turnover happens, that people aren't sitting there all day, you know, the employees from various whatever aren't parked at the ideal spaces for customers.
Well, I'm just gonna bring it up there. You can't imagine on the list to bring up later on anyways, by raising the parking meter fines to ten dollars.
Something next page.
You know, and I've brought that up before, and this would be an ideal time to do it. I mean, where it's gonna, you know, it's gonna help us out with what it's gonna cost us.
Are they currently?
Five. I mean, I know down in Mifflin Town, I know I hate to compare it with other places, but you got two blocks of town down in Mifflin Town, eight, eight charge fifteen dollars for a parking ticket fine. You know, we've been five dollars, which was back in the sixties.
Nah, that wasn't.
Pretty close.
It was two dollars until about ten years ago.
Still ancient.
I agree.
Well, how would you all about President?
Well, that, we'd have to make a amendment to that.
Cost and fee schedule.
Yeah.
So if you look at my wall in there, it's probably a dozen different things that are affected by the cost of fee schedule that we've been waiting for probably another month or so to consolidate them all, to start talking about cost of fee schedule with the finance committee and law orders, because these were finished in the law ordinance committee, and some of the other stuff is on our streets, like the UGI digging up the streets. So there's a plan in my wall in there to encapsulate all these cost of fee schedules. You're talking the pool, you're talking the fees for the guys digging up the streets, you're talking the fines, you're talking about parking, rental fees for our pavilion, the community center. Ending that cost of fee schedule, we're trying to get a handle on to discuss for making changes for two thousand twenty-three. Because we made a decision this year to leave all the cost of fee schedules alone until we look at it again. That's what the plan is right now. These here are law ordinance. If you want to bring them up for the law ordinance meeting, it's like in two weeks, we can do that, or you can discuss it tonight.
Well, I mean, and I'm just bringing it up now because sooner we get a time, you know, that if we're gonna be paying people overtime and do the job and so on, it would certainly help alleviate the.
That's what I'm saying. Who would actually need parking? So you're talking Stacy, what's she making an hour, twenty, twenty-five? I don't remember what the new contract. What'd you say, twenty-five? That's twelve fifty an hour overtime. Thirty-seven fifty for her, the parking there.
I know what Venus said about the business owners, and she's right, but that's fifty. The other fifty percent complain to me because they don't want to in front of stores, because their employees have to park there, and they don't like going off any. It's one of those ones, that you're a lawyer, you're marked, half people love you, half hate you, you know? It's just, you just can't, you can't win.
But we also have the parking authority that does not want to dissolve them, because we approached them about even eliminating, you know, just having it on the main street market, and they, they didn't want that idea. They want us to meter the lots and.
Well, the bad, the bad part about it is, anyone that's employed is gonna use those parking spaces, you know, if you're not a meter there.
Right.
I mean, and what are you gonna do about it? I mean, they're gonna, that vehicle's gonna sit there all day.
That's always been the.
Yeah.
There is, there is a group that is, you know, looking at this, whether it's meters or whether it's fines or so on. And I know we talked about getting back together. Can we, can we do that and then bring it back to council and maybe have a conversation with council on parking authority?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, we can do that, and I figured there's gonna be another meeting anyways. I mean, we said we were gonna have another meeting after the last one.
Correct, absolutely, and it hasn't happened yet, so.
But I'm just looking at something here to alleviate our costs. In the meantime, you know, we're, I think we're stupid not to raise our parking fines for five dollars, up to at least ten. I would go higher, but I, I know it, you know, ten dollars is double on your fine, so.
Well, there's, there's two items. It was increasing parking violation and meter violation, so.
Yeah.
Was parking violation the?
Well, parking violation, that was one of them.
Is that street sweeping?
No, the other, the other, street sweeping, we charge fifteen dollars. That's a, that's a fine for a street sweeper ticket.
Parking violations is people parking the wrong way.
Yeah, the other, the other, what he had down, one of them was this here for the ten dollar, raise the parking meter tickets to ten dollars and raise the parking wrong side to the curb tickets, since we're getting these ticket machines that are costing us money to twenty-five dollars. Right now, they're five dollars.
Oh, okay. Well, anyways.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what the parking ticket violations were, those two things.
I tried to schedule a meeting of the parking authority, Jim, for first part of July here. And every time I picked a day, everybody was on vacation. I couldn't get, I couldn't get all the key leaders together. Correct. Alcorn did another meeting, Jim, late in the morning.
Do I want to, do I want to bargain meter ticket to ten dollars or is she not doing that?
Oh, that's up to you guys. I didn't get to it yet, but you can, that's up to you guys. I just didn't get that far yet on my list.
Well, okay, I, yeah, I just brought it up because we're talking about.
Oh, that's fine. Well, we can tell the list. Yeah, you guys can talk about it, yeah. So, there's two more things under the regular agenda, um, updates, and you don't have to vote on discussing it. The first thing is the, the community center. So, there has been discussion about the police station being in the commuter center. There are a couple of things that we have to address and work on for that to even be possible. One of them is the lots that the community center is on is not one contiguous lot, one contiguous lot. It's three different lots. So, Rex and Caitlin have to go through and get that lot consolidated into one piece of borough property. The second thing is we need to get it reassessed because that piece of property or that building is six inches below the flood level for the Hundred Year Flood Plan, which means it limits how much money you can put into that building, whether through damage or through renovation. Our piece of the renovation, so if that is directly tied with what the assessed value is at county. We have to get it county to get reassessed. Because the plan, we're talking to Lucas like four or five months ago and we did this, and I remember Dave and I went down and walked through with Lucas. He says it's probably gonna cost at least a million dollars to renovate, around a million dollars to renovate that rec center. The way it is. So, if the assessed value is a million, there's a limit to how much we can put into renovation, which will be five hundred thousand, which means we wouldn't be able to renovate it to be a police station. So, there's some issues on that that we are trying to work forward on before we can do the, the police station at the community center. So, I just want to let you know where we stand on that right now. So, Caitlin, Rex and I are working on that, and when I get an update on this, I'll let you know. All right. The last thing is, I just put it in front of you. It's also in your council file, Mifflin County Parks and Rec Council. They, they want to disband it. I mean, rightfully so. Aaron and I have gone to meetings and there's really not much there, so. The deadline is thirty-one August, so you guys can take a look at it and then decide on ten August whether you want to vote on it or whatever you guys want to do. So, I just put it.
What do they want to do? Disband?
Disband it. Yeah, it's in the paperwork in front of you. And they got some money in there.
Are we all supposed to vote on that individually or as a group?
The borough does, as a group. It's a council, it's a council vote.
I saw that we all had them, that's why I had.
You can do, you can do it now because it doesn't involve money or, well, it kind of does. That's why I'm telling you, you probably need to wait till ten August because there's still money in the funds. That's why, like twenty-five hundred bucks or something like that. So, that's an FYI for you, to make you aware of it, that you probably have to vote on it ten August because the deadline is thirty-one August.
What's the Act thirteen account?
I forget. I used to know. I forget. Is that the stuff that had to do with the fracking? The account they set up in the state for fracking and they use that money for parks and recreation and stuff? What is it?
Act thirteen is the dollars. It's the dollars available for, uh, consolidating the state point cash.
Okay.
Yes.
The fracking.
And it's mainly for recreation.
Yeah. I mean, you can read it, make a motion, vote on it tonight. I mean, be done with it, or you can wait till ten August and we'll do it then.
Here's what you have to remember about this, though, that then all these decisions are gonna be made by the county.
Oh, I agree, I agree. But I've been to these meetings, okay?
Yeah, I was in the past.
And it, it's just, oh, my God. The last one I went to, which was, uh, that they had tied with this, there was two people who, Janet Fleming, me, Mark, Rhonda and Gary Gill, that's it.
Supposed to be a representative from each municipality.
That's correct, but they don't go anymore because of what the meetings are like.
Well, prior to COVID, they were actually very informative and we got a lot of stuff done.
And that's why county wants to do that.
After COVID, it was hard to even schedule a meeting, even Zoom.
Correct. So, we can postpone it till ten August if you want. Ten August, cool. I'll bring it back on ten August. Not a problem. The next thing on the list, oh, that's, I'm sorry, it's, it's on the back of my card, sorry.
You're done with yours, John?
Yeah, I might be something to do in the back.
Okay, keep firing it.
Thank you. Okay, for the month of June, the fire department responded to the twenty-two incidents. Uh, one miscellaneous fire, two building fires, uh, two grass rush trees, two medical assists were EMS, two motor vehicle accidents with injuries. Also had a motor vehicle pedestrian accident up Valley Street where a guy got hit on the moped. Uh, we had two what we classify as water rescues. One was a swimmer in distress. He was out of the water till we got there. Second one was a guy and his kid in his boat down Junie Island River, motor filled the boat. We ended up, what we had to do was tell him back up the shore. Uh, we had, uh, three power lines down. We had another lockout with a child involved. A kid was locked in car, we went and locked the car for him. Uh, we had two standby assignments for MCHW companies where we covered for them while they were out on fire calls. And we had two automatic alarm activations. Okay, that was a June's report. As everybody knows, we've already had two working fires this month. Uh, this past Saturday morning at, uh, six thirty, one AM, we was dispatched to catch apartments again. Uh, we was dispatched, they had a possible fire on the fourth floor. Upon my arrival about three minutes later, I was advised by a guy that was hovering out the fifth floor when the fires went to the seventh. Uh, I called back to dispatch, confirmed that, but then they had a couple more phone calls. There was a fire on the seventh floor. When I got there, they did. Uh, apartment seven oh seven had, uh, smoke coming out of it at one arrival. Uh, maintenance man met me up there at that time, but we weren't able to make entry into the bedroom and get into the outside of the apartment and the kitchen area, living room area. By that time, which had been about six minutes later, the first fire crews got there, they forced a way in. Uh, they was about with some heavy black smoke, fire, and sadly, by then, it was too late to save the victim. Had a little bit of trouble getting the door open, uh, that the she was laying inside the door, pushed the door open, but the she's laying inside, just quite a struggle. Uh, the guys done what they could do. They tried their best, but, uh, just a little late. Uh, without being said, I've been back down to catch apartments about every day since that, talking to the people and the management and what have you. Uh, as you know, the catch apartment's not a member of the, uh, Mifflin County Housing Authority. It's a private corporation. Uh, they're pretty lenient on their laws. Uh, management of the building tells me they've put requests in before to have no smoking policy put in the building and it hasn't been done. I guess to back up here a little bit, we had the major fire down there on December the eighth. I'm sure everybody remembers that. Uh, there's a hundred and forty units in that building, up to a hundred and sixty tenants when it's built up. But both fires were caused the same way. The, uh, the tenant was smoking a bed. Uh, both of them were on oxygen. And it's very obvious how this fire started. The State Police Fire Marshal, which I called in, he determined it's kind of smoking in bed. But there are some of the details with it. Also, we had a near miss down the hallway from that. We had a lady, it was a comb of smoke. We had to get her transported to the hospital. I just found out today, she's been released from the hospital and is going into rehab somewhere for a while. This is kind of, this is on call for my, what I would like tonight, I'd like to have council's blessings for myself as fire chief to write a letter to the corporation that owns catch apartments, highly recommending that they really consider to make that building on smoking. They do have a, they do have a smoking area outside, benches, ashtrays and everything else. But both of these fires, these major fires we've had now, well, December the eighth and what was Saturday, that was about the eighth and ninth. Uh, they were both caused with smoking, same way. Like I say, there's a hundred and sixty tenants in that building and a hundred and forty apartments. One of these days, I'm afraid we're gonna have more than just one patient and one victim. I did talk to management, they're a little bit wary about asking corporate to do this because they need job security. But does anybody have any issues with myself as fire chief on behalf of the Borough of Lewis Town? Write a letter stating I highly recommend to, uh, make out a non-smoking building?
Yeah, they asked my assistance also.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I got no issues.
I think, I think we ought to, you ought to say that if, if you were instructed maybe by Lewis Town Borough Council.
I know.
Keep, keep you a little bit off, up to.
I'll have you guys proofread it before mail.
Yeah. And.
Because ultimately, they'll do what they want. It's a private.
Yeah, I mean.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I mean, it, it might have a little, I, I, you know, I don't know if it'd have any more impact or not, but if, if you say you were instructed by Lewis Town Borough Council to send them a letter as fire chief.
Now, can, can they, can they do that, Mark? Can the council just ask it? Because it's a private entity. Can the council?
They're just asking. I mean, they're just asking, recommending. They're not mandating that, so.
Okay, I'll be working that tomorrow. Uh, that's all I have for now. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thanks, Bob.
Yes.
Do thank, sorry.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
Um, you were talking about the smoke inhalation. Are you, are the firefighters at that time wearing the SBCA system?
The fire crews were, yes.
Okay, good.
On my arrival, I wasn't. I, uh, I backed off that because.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wondering about you being up there with.
Glad you got there and confirmed things.
Now, the last thing you and I talked about on this one, you didn't mention it, is, um, fire zone parking. Is that something you want to discuss at the next Law Order meeting?
Yeah, aren't we gonna take out the law order?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what you want to.
What comes addressing here is, both fires we've had down there, uh, I've had issues getting my ladder trucks in. People's been parking in the firing, that state's fire zone. And, uh, we've had some issues there getting ladder trucks in, and they were very bright on these two fires, but they were on the seventh floor, and that's what they needed.
Thanks, Bob.
Called you about a month ago about that trash up there on the street from that accident.
All right.
Do you remember that?
Yes.
You didn't call me back. I called you again. You didn't return my phone call, so I talked to Tim. They went up and cleaned it up. The people liked that. They invested a lot of money in that. He came the other day, there's still a bunch of glass and stuff. And I think since Parsons is getting most of this stuff in town, he needs to clean his messes up. So, I don't know if he's gonna clean it up or who's gonna clean it up. I don't know, but it's on the sidewalk and stuff.
I've been by there. There's nothing there now.
Well, he told me just Saturday, he said there's still glass down there.
Is this where Mr. Banks wrecked?
Yes, that's what he. That's the one where your guys went off.
Yeah.
And they got all the trash, but that should have been the tow truck's job. That's what he gets paid for.
Well, I sent a crew up the following morning and, uh, we cleaned up the, uh, blood and everything else that was on the sidewalk and the road. Then you advised me afterwards if there was some car parts, whatever, in the guy's yard, but we never went onto somebody's property before.
It was, it was in the flower beds and everything.
But we took care of the street, the blood and the sidewalk.
I don't know. I don't know what's up there. Someone needs to go check, check it out. They're putting a lot of money in them buildings.
So, you want me to check it out as fire chief or?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to check it out.
What's that?
He's gonna have, he's gonna have verbal, take a look at it. I didn't know, you're him checking it out.
All right. You good?
Yep.
Anyone else?
Check it out. Well, we're good. Thanks to you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, report.
The only thing I have, and I do have to apologize. I don't know how I missed a quarter with my wedding report, but I did. First time in fifteen years. I don't know, too bad. So, I have, uh, first and second quarter reports here, so.
Mayor, you need to move to Vegas. You need to move to Vegas and make more money.
Yeah. A lot of nice people along the way.
Nice.
Do you charge a loan when you're gonna drive? Do you charge a loan? You gotta drive.
Yeah. Except for the orange.
It's gotta be real close, right?
Yeah, it's real.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
You're done, mayor?
I am. That's all I have.
Good, thank you.
I heard that.
Please, Kate.
Okay, statistics for June, we had six hundred and twenty-five calls for service, uh, thirty-five traffic citations, uh, seventeen non-traffic, sixty-two written warnings, uh, eight hundred and thirty-five parking tickets were issued and three hundred and fourteen street sweeper and maintenance tickets were issued. Three hundred and fourteen street sweeper. Uh, I think Kim has, you guys all have a flyer there, consider everything to put up for National Night Out. Uh, it's coming up on August the second. That's out of Dish Park from six to nine PM. This is a combined thing with all the Mifflin County law enforcement, other first responders, businesses, groups, agencies that want to participate, so. If anybody wants to participate and hasn't been in contact with anybody yet, it's not too late if you still want to be part of the, uh, National Night Out. You have a pretty good turnout for that. Uh, I think on July thirty-first, they put out one of those flyers as well, or in Splash Off, at the Burnham Pool from five thirty to eight thirty, so. Events coming up here at the end of the month in August. Just an update, our narcotics investigator position, uh, he went full-time on June the thirteenth. And just give you an update on some of the stuff he's been doing. Um, these are some photographs, just to show you some of the seizures he's made in, in the past month. First one, first picture there showed about thirty bags of fentanyl and two eight volts of methamphetamine, methamphetamine. Uh, which is about fifteen grams, so.
Okay, exactly.
First two. Third, third picture, that's, uh, again, bundles of fentanyl. There's about, uh, ten bags in each bundle. And it doesn't look like a lot, but it only takes two milligrams to be a fatal dose, and one of those packets, one of those tiny packets contains about twenty milligrams in each packet. So, there's enough in each packet to potentially kill ten people.
Cheap, though.
Doesn't look like a lot, but.
How do you take fentanyl?
What?
How do you take it?
Very space.
Yeah.
Are you straight? I don't know, straight? Do you mix it? I don't know.
Injected, well, I'm injected.
You can lacing marijuana, cigarette.
There are different ways to ingest it, but.
There was something on the news about the lady in McDonough picked up a dollar bill and had fentanyl on it and, and.
Just touching, yeah.
It's possible, and so many officers have to be cognizant of all the times when they're handling it or, you know, when they do see the testing and things like that. It's very, uh, very dangerous stuff to deal with, so.
Was there arrests made in these cases or?
Uh, so far, he has, right now, he has three active investigations. Uh, he's made, um, controlled buys, he made two felony arrests, two misdemeanor arrests, and did one search warrant so far. So, he's been pretty active, and I talked to him today. He has a lot of investigations going and a lot of undercover stuff he's going, um, so, good for us.
I know it's bad in the area.
Right. And it, it's everywhere. It's a never ending thing, but at least we can try to get some kind of handle on it and keep some of this stuff off the street. Just wanted to give you an update on what he's been doing since he just started in that position.
What was it, officer?
Uh, officer man. Uh, also, we purchased nine new tasers, uh, for the department in the last month. Uh, we just got them in about a week ago, and that's all through grant money, about fifteen thousand dollars. We got, uh, it was a county-wide grant. We applied with all the other departments. Uh, and it, it is. That's all I have for now. A couple of things for executive session.
Any questions, please, Chief? Marsha Lester.
Just one very brief issue for executive session.
I'm very business, new business. Keystone Community.
Resolution.
And this is a resolution that I talked to Jim about, and Nick, you're on board if you want to talk.
Sure.
Or Jim.
Continue.
Yeah, right, right. Um, we're already, uh, you know, partnering with the borough on the Keystone Community designation as we're looking at redesignation. Um, we have the, uh, both the core community and then also the enterprise zone. The state looks at it that they want us to divide these two. They want the designation for the enterprise zone as well as the core community. So, you know, it just makes sense with the enterprise zone addressing manufacturing and industrial properties, and that's specifically what it is for, for MCIDC to oversee that coordination role. So, that's what, um, you know, Nick will be doing with the enterprise zone. We've been very, um, I guess, I would say fortunate to be able to, you know, reach out to the state to receive tax credits for companies that are making major improvements, major investments, and also adding employees. You know, initially, uh, there, there have been two tax credit, uh, projects in Granville Township with Nittany Paper. Of course, there's one in Dairy with, uh, the, uh, setup of Shiger Brewery. And most recently, we've also, um, received some dollars, tax credits for Clay. And most recently, we've also, um, received some dollars, tax credits, for Clayton Lewiston. So all these are major investments, bringing in employees, and, uh, just, uh, May 31st, we also put in an application for another company. Um, so, um, pretty, you know, psyched about the, uh, investment and the incentives that are being provided, and that's where, you know, MCIDC will play a major role in this as well. Really no obligation to council. It just provides the ability for, you know, companies within the borough that are within manufacturing and industrial zones to, uh, be able to access these tax credits in addition to other incentives.
It just, it adds to the incentive packages that we might be able to gather for low interest, sometimes grant funding, those types of things, and encourages major investments in companies, so. Tax credits work if you could, you could get, you know, a million-dollar project could get a quarter of a million dollars, or whatever the state is determining factors to how many dollars to put into the project. They run it based on number of jobs created, amount of investment, that kind of thing, so. The company can either use the tax credit against its Pennsylvania tax liability, or sell the tax credit, maybe 90 cents on the dollar, 85 cents on the dollar, to help compensate for an investment made back in the business. It's a good fit. Our board passed it last year, actually, we've been through the application process of it, so. Jim will continue to package with me on that, and, you know, for just a good program to keep going. And my board is very much on board because of wanting to have the incentive for this.
And this doesn't cost the boroughs or council any money?
It's just an enabling resolution. You're basically allowing the, the program to operate in the borough.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion made, property second. Question? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two things will be, the next two things actually on the list here will be executive session. Uh, but I do need permission to advertise for a borough treasurer.
I make a motion, we, second.
Motion made, property second, advertise for full-time borough manager. Questions?
Treasurer.
Or secretary.
Treasurer. Trager.
What do I have to say?
Sorry about that.
It's, it's, I advertise for full-time borough treasurer slash deputy borough management.
Questions? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
All right. 403 West Fifth Street handicap parking spa, spa request. Well, I did some research on this. Let me pull this up for you, okay? This individual requested, uh, handicap parking in front of his spot, in front of his house. This is 405th West Street, 403. It's this side right here, right here. Now, we went and looked. You can see right here, this line. There already used to be a handicap spot there. Let me see if I can make this thing bigger if you guys can see. See that line? That would've used to be a handicap spot. There's no sign there, because I looked in the files, and I think two years ago, through resolution, you removed that as handicap parking. I think somebody else was there and they moved, and that's why you took it out. So this resident here is asking for, uh, parking at this spot.
But that is his car in that spot now.
I don't know. It's a Google map. When I went, there was nobody there. This, I had, uh, Caitlin make this map, so you guys can see the aerial view. It also shows they got off-street parking in the back.
They know that if there's someone else handicapped, they can use that space.
Correct.
It's not just.
That's, that's, that's absolutely correct. You're right.
Yeah, that's anyhow.
Yep. So back here, and this is actually a place to park. But the problem is, you know, the walk, I guess, you know, the distance. So just to show you, the back of the house, you can park here. See, this is parking, and this is the other half of the house, right here. This is the spot that's there now, no sign, so it's not in. And these high grasses are even dressed through Caitlin and Rex.
Is that one of the high steps that are right there?
Yeah, so this is the one. They live on this side.
If the handicap, probably go down those steps.
Well, that's, that's exactly right. They, they, they said they have trouble walking going upstairs, but, I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do. So the question is, when you made a comment already, they have to walk so far from the back, or it's shorter, but they have to go steps. The bottom line is, do we approve this handicap spot? And all we would do is put the sign back up again.
Make a motion, we do.
Second. Motion made, property second. Questions? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Pendot Cost Sharing. We have to do a resolution. I think we actually gotta get two of them. Uh, let me find Pendot on here. There's two of them, I believe. One is for Valley Street, so cost sharing with the state, so 75-25. So we have to move, move, not remove, move somewhere utilities, in other words, our manholes, with the just manholes. So that's property owned by the borough, but there's a law that says they do a cost sharing 75-25. So one resolution is to do the cost sharing for Valley Street.
Who pays the 75?
The state.
Okay, good.
We get the 25. Now, they, now they came back and said, it's 75-25, um, but if you don't meet a certain deadline, getting back to them like the end of the week, then we pay 100%. So I put a sentence in there saying, if Pendot doesn't complete the project by the time they say it's gonna be done, they're paying 100%, and they didn't plead it. So I can play games too in that. So the bottom line is, this is one of them. The other resolution is, I started working the Green Gables issue with the mayor last year after I got hired there. Remember the lights?
Right.
So there was no cost agreement in place with, with Pendot. And so when I approached Pendot about that, they said they would get to the lawyers and take about a month, and they'd have a, a new agreement written up, because the agreement that was in place between Lewiston Borough, we don't know where it's at, Pendot doesn't know where it's at. So they said they would just do a new agreement. So a year later, we still don't have this agreement, so we had a meeting with Pendot maybe a week and a half ago, and they wanted me to get these forms signed, and I said, I'm not signing any of your forms until I get my agreement. So they went back and got with these guys, and they sent me the agreement, but it's not really the agreement. It is as if they're actually doing a complete project down there and building all the lights and everything. So, but there's still a cost share on that, so I'll need a resolution for that, which is 50-50. When they already have something in place, it's 50-50, the streetlights in town. If they're all but Pendot, it's 50-50. So I really, to be honest with you, I'm kinda confused on this one, um, but, because I know there's two resolutions involved, Mark. Um, and I know they can approve both, but could you help me with the one resolution for the 75-25, and the other one for 50-50?
Just help change the language?
Yeah, just the language and stuff, yeah, okay.
That means you wanna adopt them to the head or just?
I would like to. They need them adopted, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt them.
All right.
Motion made, property second. Local please.
Robert Hammond.
Yes.
Nelson Reconnect.
Yes.
Larry Sera.
Yes.
Venus Shade.
Yes.
James Still.
Yes.
Aaron Wilson.
Yes.
Bill Wilson.
Yes.
I'll get this taken care of, you know. The next thing is a solid waste authority, uh, solid waste authority committee. Let me find that on here, right here. Bottom line is, they're, they're, I'm not sure if they're forming a committee. It looks like they're, they're forming one, but they need members, and they want the borough to appoint somebody to sit on this committee. Now, I contacted them about it and said, do you want somebody, you know, from the council, or, you know, somebody, you know, a member? They just want somebody from the borough, so it doesn't have to be somebody from council. Uh, because they said the borough is probably the biggest user of the solid waste authority, because, you know, the size of the town. Um, but they would like to appoint, have us appoint somebody to be on this committee. I mean, I have no problem being on it. If you guys want to appoint me, you want to pair, I don't, I don't care. I mean, it's up to you guys. Whoever you guys wanna sit on this thing. The directions are on there. There are only a couple, couple meetings a year, like two meetings a year or something. And you're not a decision-maker, you just sit there and provide advice, you're not like, when you're on the, was available board, you know, and you made your decisions, it wasn't like that.
Anybody want one of those, Kim?
Well, they're not probably accessible for those who are supposed to work during the day.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I can't do it for the borough, because I don't live in the borough, but I could do it as the manager for the borough.
Well, Aaron, Aaron, Aaron.
I'll go with you, even just to go as a resident of the county.
Aaron said he'll do it, too.
Wait, table for tea.
Okay, you're, you're appointed.
That's facts.
And I'll get all the details, and I'll just go with you, whatever, that's fine. I have no problem, because I don't want to lose track of this. Okay, we already approved the purchase of the sewer camera, uh, the special funds. Um, we're gonna do the research on the air system for the fire department, try to help them out. And then we have the, the violations down here. If you wanna talk about those now, or we can do a long order in two weeks, whatever you wanna do, I mean.
Well, I, I, I'd, I'd like to get that, get the ball rolling. I mean, we've talked about this for so long now. We're in the point where it's, it's gonna cost us more money to collect these fines, so we may as well get what we can as soon as we can.
Is this an ordinance if we increase these fines, or we have to do?
Yeah, it's ordinance number 233-48. So currently, anybody who violates Section 44, which is, I think, street sweeper, is a $15 fine. And if you do an overtime meter, it is, uh, $5. So that's, that's where you're.
I'd want to increase it there. I'd like to increase it, yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Well, you'd have to need a motion on each one.
So what, what we'll need to do is we'll have to advertise it for the August meeting. You just let, you let me know what to change it to, I guess.
I make a motion, we, uh, raise the parking tickets to $10.
I remember.
Motion made, property second. Question?
Do you want that, so, that, that applies to Section 45, which is deposit one or more coins in the parking meter, overtime parking violation, and it's a violation to extend money in the meter, to extend the parking time beyond the maximum parking time. So do you want the, raise, raise the fine?
From $5 to $10.
To 10 for both of those. Perfect. Okay, I'll have it up for next meeting.
Yeah.
Did they vote on that?
Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares? Now, the other one was, uh, to raise the, to raise the parking alongside the curb to 25 dollars.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's actually the first one. Yes, okay.
It is currently what?
$5.
Oh, it's currently 5. Oh, okay.
So people park, go in the wrong way and end up side, that's what it's for.
Raise it from 5 to 25. You'd make a lot of money, save a lot of cars.
Yeah.
You're looking at one of them.
You got that big fuck.
He just got paid. He had your check.
Just wanna hand it over now?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we raise the wrong side of the street parking from 5 to $25 fine.
Second. Motion made, property second. Question? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares? Okay, now, we both have the same time.
Yeah, well, yeah, maybe.
Now, the third thing, number 10, is increasing skill machine fees. What, what is it right now, or Caitlin?
$75 a machine per year.
And you wanna phrase that correctly.
I'd, I'd like to raise that to $500 a machine.
Um, I did some research. Um, most of the other local towns in Pennsylvania, theirs averages between 150 to 200 a machine, so we are drastically low. 500 seems really high, but maybe somewhere in the middle would be average to the area.
My reason for making it 500 is I think the machine get out of town.
They're not going. They make too much money.
Can I say something else?
I mean, and they're, they're making, it, it's not, it's not a problem for them to pay $500 a fee.
Right. I think the issue is the way the ordinance is written now. The amusement devices includes, like the carousel skating rink, the pinball machines, the claw game machines. We need to change the ordinance so it differentiates the skills games, where you're earning money, versus the games that are for kids just for fun. I think we need to differentiate that. Because right now, you have to pay $75 a fee.
Well, those, those pinball machines aren't considered a skill machine, are they?
They fall under the amusement device tax that the ordinance is currently written.
But my only concern is for these skill machines.
Right, so we need to change.
I mean, you know, people, if people are renting buildings to fill up with these machines, you know.
Right. But the way the ordinance is written now, if you change the amusement device tax to 500, you're also affecting the claw machine, the pinball machine, them.
Okay, so what do we, how do we have to?
Change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance, change the wording.
So bring in some more ordinance, that'd be a discussion there. I think we're all in the same age with you, Abby. You just gotta do the ordinance making.
Yeah, currently it involves all kinds of stuff. Marvel machines, pinball machines, skill ball devices, testus skill machines, fortune telling machines, art line machines, video games, and the rest, so. I guess we'll just maybe look around and get some, see what some other places have done in terms of their skills.
Okay, okay.
And put that long order.
The last thing on my list for the executive session is the school resources office, officer MOU. That was signed by the, uh, school district back in May. Let me find it on here, police department, I think. The school signed it. Basically, I've gone through with Dave. They only added, uh, increased the hours from four hours to six hours, right, for the SRO?
Yes.
And they pay for it. Everything else was stayed the same, pretty much.
If you need a motion.
Yeah, we have to have a school, the school district signed it. We got it signed now.
Second. Motion made, property second. Question? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
Yep, till we get some set.
Anybody have anything else before we adjourn for executive session? Okay, then we're gonna go into executive session. May I come back to order?
Okay, I make a motion that we improve the hiring of a part-time community center coordinator.
Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I also make the motion that we hire a part-time human resource person.
Second.
Motion made, property second. Questions? Although it's a favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, yeah.
No.
Opposed?
Just say opposed.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I'll go along with it now.
Five and two. It was five and two.
I, I.
Oh, you did also? Okay, I didn't hear it. Four, three.
Sorry.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, that's all. I heard of that, I might just have.
Last thing is 12 August, we have our borough play party at the rec park, just to remind you that. So 12 August, we might 12, 2, or 3, something like that, so.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Anybody here?